Good evening everyone, I'd like to welcome you to our regular, not regular, but special, special meeting we've set up for June 14th, 2021. Mr. Bridge will be filling in for Ms. Berner as the Clerk of Council, so we appreciate that sir. And if you would call roll.
Absolutely. May Councilman Rovol.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cook.
Here.
Mayor Lowery.
Here.
Councilman Grimm.
Here.
Councilwoman Ingleston.
Yep.
Councilwoman Nowakowski.
Here.
Councilman Todd. So we have six members present with Mr. Todd being.
Yes, and we'll have to excuse him towards the end of the meeting. And invocation tonight will be done by Vice Mayor Cook.
If you will bow your heads. Our Heavenly Father, please bless this meeting. Let us do what we can as far as the best for the citizens of this city. Please protect our first responders, our serfes debities, our EMTs, and our firefighters. With that, we pray amen.
Thank you sir. And then we'll do the pledge.
Praise the heavens to the light of the United States of America. We do the Republic of which stands, the one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Moving on, action on minutes, none. Communications, none. City manager's report, none. Comments from members of the public? Any comments? None? Didn't expect any on this meeting. And committee reports, none. Moving on, resolutions, ordinance is none. Other business? Discussion, first topic will be the CDVG projects discussion. I don't see how you say that so fast, Mr. Picko.
It took a lot of years.
CDBD, yeah. All right, so I don't know who, did you want to start us off, Mr. Bridge? Or did you just want to open it up to council as a discussion? Or I didn't know if you had any updates since our last meeting?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So let me just update council. We had Mr. Chief come out on Friday, Van Con Builders. Kind of looked at some things. We really wanted to have some like really strong numbers for council, but what we've learned from the experts that we had out on site is that to build a comparable sized shelter house, and for those of you that were at that meeting, if I misspeak, please correct me, because there was a lot of information. For us to build a very comparable sized shelter house is going to take three hundred dollars of money. So how we initially did it, we went online and got some estimates and stuff like that. Maybe about 1:30 to get a really nice building, but still shelter house before we see that number. Online was not accurate from when they actually saw people in person. It wasn't the same website or anything that gave you estimate. So once we found that information out, basically what we have to present to council is we need a clear instruction on, an instruction on which way council wants to proceed with a project. It doesn't look like we'll be able to do much with a shelter house and a skate park. And the skate park would be, you know, all that money goes into the skate park, and the shelter house would have to question, and I know some things come up about the story as well. So what we're hoping for today is council can leave with a clear directive for us to, so we can get through that application, because as our guest at the last meeting said, Dirk, the first come, first served basis, and we hate to miss up on this free month. Some things that we did find out during the meeting from Dirk, who was also present there at that meeting on Friday, is where are we, the city will have to spend some money out of the pocket more likely to design for the architect and stuff like that. Dirk is going to be going back to his, because if you remember in that pre-application, there was forty thousand set aside for administrative costs. And that usually gets proceeded by the county manager for administrative expenses. So he is going to see if we can actually get some of that to help pay for the design aspect of it. I'm not holding my breath like that, to be honest with you. So we will be, we will have to like, like I said, design it and then get the formal action to help with that. But again, we're looking at most of that grant money to be made up with either the shelter house or all go to the skate park for full or however talented it is. And what I get today is just a quick map of just the location of where we're thinking about putting that shelter house in the park. I know the parks in record have wanted additional parking. So we're talking about this, with this grant money, if council chooses to use it all in the shelter house, it is a good way to go ahead and get additional parking in the park. Haven't come off Washington. And I just did a really rough drop where you see the, the arrow coming in from Washington is where that little driveway is essentially. We can have it swing snake back there, but the area we're looking for is basically this area encompassing, there's some trees there, there's some metal, old school metal playground equipment. But then that's why I just wanted to get council to see if you guys have somewhat of a visual or a section of the park we're looking at. You have anything to add, Mr. Picko?
Other than the shelter portion will be turnkey, that's water sewer and everything is part of the cost, part of the pavement, all that.
Would that be, since I wasn't there, just out of curiosity, I don't know if it was discussed, would that be a one single room and a kitchenette, just like at the end? Or would it be like a slight separation or anything?
That would come up to the design. You know, we can even have, we've talked, really talked about that, whether the kitchen be in its own separate room or just having literally one big open area, the kitchen kind of off to the corner. We would want some kind of island or something to come out so people can serve up, put food up, but to enclose it.
Gotcha.
Yep. Because we didn't, because we didn't want a full blown kitchen in there.
Yeah.
If we put ovens in there.
Yeah, I just couldn't, we got some of them off. I'm sorry.
It's all right. If, if we put what's called a warming kitchen, which is primarily, and I will call it a household stove, refrigerator freezer, microwave, that type thing, we're okay. If we go with any type of a commercial kitchen that would have an open flame, now we're into a fire suppression system. And the other thing that the builder brought out in our discussion was the fact that if we go with three hundred people, anything that's going to be three hundred people or more is going to require a sprinkler system, which is going to run your cost up considerably. So primarily, I think we looked at the fact that for something like comparable with what we got, the four hundred thousand is going to be shot.
If I could add on to that, so I had to get clarified something from Mr. Picko too. Oven, I think he recommended almost like a built-in, full wall, because the oven's fine. It's the top stove top or exactly, make it a different type of kitchen. So if there was a stove in there, we could have a range of top.
Put it being a wall.
And then he recommended just doing some sort of, because I mean, people more likely won't be doing their cooking there, so they're going to be cooking and bringing it there. As he said, a lot of the newer ones are doing to avoid all this stuff, they're putting in basically four or five walls.
Just like toaster ovens.
Which would be completely sufficient.
Yeah, that was my, that was going to be my question. If we went with a shelter, would we even need a, you know, just a microwave?
Yeah, I mean toaster oven, microwave, refrigerator. Yeah, because something to keep your stuff cold, warm up if you move through.
Nothing looks like big, you know, grease fires.
And that's why we could put that kitchen on kind of one of the back sides, make it a use state, keep it open that way if you are in the kitchen, you're not separated from the guest. The one thing the builder did say is we'll have to have two bathrooms. We'll have to have, from there on, a female bathroom. Or even does name both of themselves.
Clearly, they need to be activated.
Yeah.
I would suggest rather than going with microwave ovens, you get like a built-in oven under a counter, because it gives you a whole lot more space. If you have a large group of people, you're probably going to have more, probably going to be in nine by thirteen pans, which will not fit into most microwaves anyhow.
That's why he recommended the glorified warming station there now.
Yeah, countertop, countertop toaster oven.
But I agree with you, if there isn't kind of big bulky thing, it needs to be, if not, it's just going to be additional space you've got to kind of work around.
Right.
So are we going to put parking over by that building as well? Or have we just been increased by the current shelter house?
No, we're going to have a whole new parking, and then we can do a little over, you know, for additional parking if people want to go. And if you look at how it would end up being laid out, I wish we could have a little better. But we say this comes out here, and these are just rough estimates.
Yep.
We have it there, the parking left here. We do want to keep a little space around our current playground, put it for expansion.
Yep.
And we want to keep, I don't know, I don't know, twenty, thirty foot buffer from the playground.
You want to buffer from the playground so accidentally steps on the gas, it'll have to.
Oh, absolutely, no, no.
Yes, it'll all be servicing that, so, and that may even, if you look at it like that, if we end up going that route, it may reduce what we need to do on the other side of the park.
Now, we have access to the building parking wise off of Washington as well, or just straight off of, by itself?
On Washington.
Okay.
Yeah, because we don't want, we don't want to take.
So you don't want to cut across.
No, we don't want to take any vehicles or traffic across that line.
Does the, I wouldn't, since I wasn't at the meeting, but I think I already asked this, part, asphalt parking lot is not part of the grant, right? Just that would have to be done.
Oh, it would all be part of it.
At the meeting, you said no.
That's not what I was saying.
I asked if that would include expansion of parking lot, because he probably meant the one where, that one where the front area. Oh, okay, okay, okay. So it would cover, okay, gotcha. Thank you.
It'd be part of it, we would have to have parking.
Right, no, I knew that, I just didn't know if we had to put that out of our own pocket.
No, I think in the meeting, he said the only thing the grant what to cover was architectural piece, that's what I have to cover, which Randy brought up about, about the forty-four thousand or whatever it is, forty thousand, see if we can get some of that back on to cover our services aspect. There might be a few other things, which Hallie had brought up with him as well, about some past grants he's been able to get it into, into the grant work where it probably got cost as well, so.
The other thing, this is going to be probably metal building, with your present wood cost up over two hundred percent. It was looked at the fact that the metal building is going to be much cheaper and is going to get much more bang for the buck.
And maintenance, I mean, right now we're having issues at the current shelter house with.
Yeah, about every five to seven years, we do a coating, which is fine, that'll keep it for a hundred years. And then we have the bore, boring bees that we always have to take care of.
Yeah, we were, I don't know if he talked to you about it, after we left the last meeting, we were, they were up there digging away.
Yeah, I got to get that guy to come in.
And metal, and metal buildings have come a long way.
Oh, yeah.
Part of the charm of our shelter house is the rest of nature. I've had a lot of people comment, like, the metal building, maybe it's a bit, same issue. That's one of the things I brought up, I'm a, from a plan of design, that, if, it, not idea, but at the same time, dude, you can, you can paint the exterior of the metal to be like a brown, and then do landscaping around it. And then clearly, it's not going to match perfectly, but they really, and those councilors are doing the structure. But hopefully they'll be separated enough to not cause too much of a problem. But if they need a two, it is a big deal, but it's not a big deal.
What does, I know you mentioned before, and I just didn't want to say it again, it's not the right, what did you say, just ballpark the shelter house, like, is it fifteen, twenty thousand?
About sixteen thousand.
Sixteen thousand. Now, would we assume, you know, because the current one won't have a kitchen, so I would assume you might charge just a, you know, a few bucks more for the one that's newer and a few more, you know, amenities.
Yeah.
And that's, and I like to question each spot, so here's the thought, I like the idea of a shelter house, and hear me out, what about moving it to a different location? And I just literally thought of this yesterday. This could serve two purposes. We got a second shelter house, because we know the current one we have is always, you know, I think as we discussed, that's why we're sitting here, because it's pretty much rented out for the entire month of June. Move it to the pool. And here's what I'm saying, is we've got this huge concrete pad of down there that we, which would have to be ripped out. Build it in that area, put a fence, you, and I've got it drawn up, it's going to be hard to explain without me showing it to you, but make it part of the pool. So you, that, you make it part of the pool, so that way, it's another revenue for the pool, to help the pool recoup some of its money year round, instead of just the three months. So the pool's running and it's losing, you know, let's just say for conversation, say fifteen thousand dollars a year. Even though the pool closes at the end of August, you've still got the shelter house, we'll call it the clubhouse in the pool, that can be rented, that still generates revenue year round to help make up any difference. But it's also gated off to where if you rent it during the pool season, you've got that option to, okay, I've got this clubhouse, it can open up to the pool if need be during the summer. But once summer's gone, you, you basically lock that gate, you can't get into the pool, and it still gets rented year round and generates money.
Mike?
Yes?
There's a magic marker there on a board, can you put some boxes up there so that I can?
Yeah, well, I've got, yeah, I can try.
March and press.
Why don't you just pass that around?
Okay, so I'll pass, I'm going to explain it to this side, so I should have printed this out, I apologize, I just brought this, I did this last night. Okay, so currently, the volleyball net is here, and this is a full, two-sided, even though only one of it gets used, basketball court. Put a, these are all new, yellow is all new yellow color. This one, you can put the clubhouse here, put a fence here, a fence here, so it's locked off, so no one can just walk in the corner or to the clubhouse. You can still walk in the front door, just like our current one.
Right.
And then what would happen is during the season, this back door, yeah, they could go out to the pool, the volleyball net, the basketball court, even the skates. These are gates, these areas here are gates. So after the pool closes, it's still part of the pool, you put it under the same fund, and it's still generating money for a pool where everyone is so concerned about possibly losing money. But once the pool's closed, you obviously don't want someone walking out and, you know, getting into the pool. This back door, they put a gate up, and it separates from the pool after season, so they can only get to this side over here. So they've still got basketball court, volleyball court, skate park, that their kids could use.
So the rental, the clubhouse would include pool?
Exactly. During the pool season.
They didn't want to get any.
It's just a buck. And you would still have your second children, you're just moving location and generating more money.
I have a question after you show.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so here we go again. This is the big concrete slab that's down at the pool where the racket court used to be, it's no longer there, of course, it has to be torn out, older structure. This is where the volleyball net's at, this is a full-blown basketball court. You divide it in half, because only one half of it gets used. Volleyball court over, and that gives you the room for the shelter house here. In a nutshell, it's just designing all these different fences. During the pool season, you could go out this door, out of the back of the shelter house, you could still have the front doors too. So if you rent a bit during pool season, you could enjoy the pool as well, as part of your party rental or, or, you know, shelter rental, if that's what you wanted to do. But after season, you could put a fence here, or however you want to lay it out, to where that, there's a gate here that's locked, so that after the pool's closed, you can't go to the pool. You know, you can't fall in the pool and get hurt or whatever. But then you've got all the other amenities that are still open. You've got the clubhouse, you've got the volleyball net, the basketball court, the skate park, that they could also still. So therefore, it's generating money for itself and, and also to help this. But, and they're not right on top of each other. You have two full clubhouses that are in Smith Park side by side, and say there are four, twenty, twenty people renting them at the same time, and now you've got two parties trying to use the same playground, which loses that personal feel. Two next thing.
My only concern is the parking down there at the pool. We were there Sunday, and parking was at a free.
Oh, yeah.
And we looked at that area east of the pool, that wooded area, which again, could be cut down and leveled for additional parking. I'll be honest, until we decide what we're going to do with that pool.
Well, that's the thing though, if the pool decides to close, you can still utilize that area. Let's say, say the pool closes.
But if the pool closes and we want to redevelop that area, now we have a structure in there that is, we have to work around.
Right, but you're going to fill the pool anyway, so it would leave you a nice landscape for.
For what? So I mean, the thing, we'd have to design around that building, that's, that's there. We would, we would have to, I mean, if say the pool closes, three or five years, or it could be open for returns, you know? But if you have a structure in there that you put in your shelter house, and let's say the pool closes, and we want to redevelop that area, whether we want to make a commercial, sell it to whoever, and now we have a shelter house there, that we will have to literally either parcel out and sell, or develop around.
And you just develop around it, you'd have all that, if, if it came to that, you'd have the pool, you'd fill it in or tear it out, and now you've got room for a nice, you know, you know, playground equipment right next to it, just like you would at Smith Park.
But also too, if the pool is gone, and it's closed, it's also a very economically valuable parcel land we can sell for a business purpose, to get tax relief. So we'll have to decide where, like, we have to, like, we have to, at that point in time, we'll have to worry about water, sewer, because we have to have bathrooms in that facility, figure out where we'd have to connect that to. But that's the ultimate council decision. But from administrator position, I would like to see not a dime of this money go to the pool. I mean, it's grant money, it's free, we've put a lot of money in that pool these past few years, it's not making money. I think council should sit down at some point in time and have a really good hard heart about when's that pool going to actually get enough ready that it's not going to cost us an arm and a leg every year to have it, versus, we've got to have a hard heart about that pool. And to put a new structure down there with not knowing that history, just for a shelter house to benefit the pool, and the pool probably at that point in time, I don't know if we could even receipt that as pool revenue, we have to see how that works for the office. So there's a lot of backend stuff that we have to look at. But no offense to anyone, but we've put a lot of money in that pool these past two years. This is something that we've got on the corner of nearly half a million dollars to reap. I think we should just spread the wealth and invest in other parts.
Does anybody have a problem, even though it's asked, like, you're going to ask questions? Man.
So are you saying if they go to shelter house access, are you saying that if someone, you have a rented the shelter house, would they be granted access to the pool?
It would be their option, I mean, you know, just thinking out loud. I mean, if I, you know, if it was down there, it'd be like, okay, and I haven't written out any of the options, but you know, you rent the shelter house, it's this price just to rent the shelter house, it's next to the pool, hypothetically, but for X amount of dollars more, if you now have access, your party has access to the pool. If not, that gate would stay closed, and they are just able to get to the shelter.
My question then is, let's say somebody rents out the shelter house, and they have pool access, they have about a hundred people, a hundred and fifty people in the park, how is that going to affect the regular usage of the pool? Once they have like a, when is it?
So it'd have to be a pretty good sized clubhouse to fit a hundred people.
Well, I mean, if you think about, I'm thinking about the way that you live in the, as a shelter house in the park, and typically, not everybody's using three sides of the shelter house, because they change their outfit and park, you know, people are kind of coping, I've even seen people have a restaurant there.
Mm-hmm. I know. Bounce houses.
But not everybody's always putting inside building, I live a third bedroom.
People are, there's a lot of grand, there's a lot of, people are, they don't, sometimes they don't, they don't.
You good?
Yeah.
Awesome, thank you.
Do we, have we measured what size square building, square foot building we can get?
No.
I'm not.
Can I see that? Do I get a digital?
Mine?
Yeah.
I apologize, we were on sketch, my bad.
Well, we're good at that kind of stuff. So we would have the pool.
This is the pool basketball court. Right now, even though only one of it's used, it's a double sided court, but only this side is used. But it's big enough to take the volleyball, which is here, put a, these are, like, this is where I started, new fences up. You rip this side of the court out, put sand, move volleyball over, and that gives you playing or racket ballers for the clubhouse. You fence it in to where, you know, it's kind of like a, you know, lock and key on your system, where, and I would still need something over here. You know, if they want, you know, if it was.
Mine?
Yeah, sorry.
Oh, you're good. So can't we just tie the water into the water into the water? Bring it over?
Mm-mm. It's not large enough.
Draw the smooth.
Oh, that pipe, that granite.
Yeah.
So it would literally have to come in from.
It would come over here off this lake in Blue Baker. Yeah, you'd have to run all new for it.
So that's probably, because we can get a big tax relief from that.
Well, this is eighty, eighty-five, this is, this building is almost a hu, it's a hundred feet long.
Like the floor there.
So you're at a hundred, yeah, you're probably.
About three.
Two hundred and fifty. You, you, I mean, I think you would make it in sewer, water doesn't matter.
But all these green areas are just like where you would, you could, you know, open and close gates, depending on what you want. You know, it still probably needs to be some sort of fence here, so if they wanted access, if their party included pool access, then you'd have a gate where they could go in now. But if it was after the pool season, it'd be, you know, a fence here or something, it was locked, so that they couldn't walk over here and trip and, you know, fall in the empty pool or whatever. You could still have access to all of this stuff. You'd lock that, you know, you'd lock anything, you could go over here and get into the pool, you'd just, you'd have access to this stuff.
How big of a clubhouse is this?
Oh, I don't know, I just, you know, I was, you know, our current, when I say clubhouse, I just call it a clubhouse, it doesn't sound relevant.
So the pool wouldn't use this for daily operations?
No, it would still be for just rents, not for the pool rent, you know what I'm saying? It would just be part of the pool as far as, under one, you know, title facility, and then, no, I'm assuming, I didn't measure that concrete pad of the racket court was, but I mean, it looks similar to what our current shelter.
Yeah, probably a little under, the only thing that'd be is, is parking, would be just outside of the pool would be easy, but parking during the summer months.
Then I, then I, then I'd pop these over here, just to give you.
Yeah, you could add a million of them, but what I was looking at was just who is going to have priority parking for whether you're here or you're going in the pool.
Let me ask you this, if you bring, it doesn't matter if there's water, sewer lines under the concrete, you can do whatever you want on top of it.
Say that again?
So if the sewer lines run, I'm assuming they're run here?
They're, they're not in here at all, they, they.
Well, and they would.
Yeah, they would come out here and the right of way, run here, and then you would run them in.
Cool sticks out there.
Yeah, you wouldn't run anything in this, in this line, you'd run it into ditch.
Do you know about how many per foot?
I just don't want to keep.
No, I'm sorry.
You run about fifty dollars per, fifty dollars per foot for utility.
Per utility?
Easy, yeah.
Hundred dollars for water and sewer?
Yeah, because you're looking.
How far would that have been?
Oh, no, it's farther than that.
So a hundred and fifty? Right, that's to go down to ninety green.
How much is this?
Mr. Bridge? None of it. None of it. Give me a second.
Yeah, we're doing some math.
Mr. Graham, have a question when you're ready.
Oh, what's that?
You're going to have to have room here between sixty and eighty spaces.
So you're a hundred dollars?
This is not changed.
You're giving a hundred and seventy-five.
You're going to be paying about two twenty-five to two fifty, you just come from that intersection, all the way down to that building.
All the way up here. I'm just wondering, we're going to tear out the apartment, you know, and at some point in time, I want to see this road taking wider and that part going up there.
My concern is, you know, it's, it's full of that, that year, in this traffic, with the, the bug on the road.
How far past the end of the parking lot at the pool, the city property?
Here's the pool.
I don't know. You'll have more access to that on your iPad, pull up the county G I S records.
No, Mr. By chance, Mr. Picko?
What's that?
How far, like, next to skate park where it turns into trees, how much farther city property goes, ballpark? How far, like, next escape park where it turns into trees, how much farther city property goes, ballpark?
I looked, I think there's like an acre or something over there in there.
I wanted to leave with information.
There's an easement that comes in and then it turns into Fad Meadows property past that easement. So we go a little bit towards the woods a little bit more, then there's a wide easement in Fad Meadows, and then it goes into highway property. But another thing too is we don't know the top of graph, the top of graph of that. You can, we don't know, I don't know, and someone else will know, how do they know? But say where the woods line starts, is that flat land or does it start to go down into a ridge? I don't know, never been tapped before. Because if it just starts to go down, then you might as well consider that under development. See what I'm saying? How flat is it before it starts to? Is the creek that down in the ravine or is the creek at ground level?
Oh, no, yeah, the creek, the creek goes down.
It is.
It's, it's a, it's a flood zone all the way through that area. I just don't know how far it comes back up on our property. Um, this is a hundred and ten feet. So you figure at one ten plus about a hundred, you're two ten to get out in the intersection. You're probably at two fifty.
Twenty fifty feet?
Yeah, I would say at least.
And times that by hundred? So twenty to thirty thousand just in that?
So you're looking at twenty, thirty thousand just to get water and sewer. We'll have to bring it off through Baker. It's about fifty dollars per foot for utility. And we're estimating around, you know, it's gonna be where you just. About twenty-five thousand of that plus will be just for, um, get the water. We don't wanna worry about it. It's not big enough to connect it.
It feeds the pool from Brubaker, but it, you can't tie it because we only have a two inch that feeds the pool, which feeds the whole pool system. So we'd have to tie in a whole new, um, probably four, a six inch minimum to have it hydrated down there. And then sewer would be minimum of four inch.
What about at Smith Park?
Right off Lawson.
Yeah, the water and sewer run right at the hillside of, uh, Smith Park.
How far is it from?
On the park side or on the house side?
The proposed location on where it'd be about one seventy-five to two hundred. And then, um, I'm already looking at running other water line because the, the current shelter house, current outdoor restroom, and the new, uh, drinking water fountain, we're looking to tie a new line in anyway. Because they're underfed from Smith Street from back when the old shelter house used to be there.
That's why if you flush the toilet and the bathroom.
Kind of takes forever.
So what would cost to that?
Uh, the good thing about it is it's almost all, all grass, no crossings. And then one is the right of way of ours stop at Brubaker. Um, I gotta look at where the pool is, but yeah, we're, be a couple crossings. It needs a little more probably at the pool location than there. You just, they would just open trench and dirt. They would have no crossings. Um, there is storm that runs very close to that side also. So it just depends.
So for the sake of saving government time, resources, I would like to have a, and I don't know how council and former do it, um, but as council as a whole, even entertaining, putting one in under the period of this time.
Well, there was also the skate park. I think some, I think some, one else.
Skate park is a little different. It's not really technically part of it.
Yeah, no, I know that, but I know, I think someone wanted to talk about it.
But it could be used, you could use that grant money for the skate park.
Yes. That's so council.
A skate park's kind of a benefit.
It is, but, and I'll be honest with you, when I first got this and we thought we could do both, I was leaning towards more towards skate park and do a shelter house or a jeep. But now that it comes in that, you know, that we both, you might as well get something that'll bring revenue. And I hate to abort it, but the skate park is something that we could relocate, um, and put a little love into it. But again, at the same time too, you have to look at revenue. You have to look at who's going to use this.
Free, we relocate where?
Smith Park somewhere, somewhere else, you can stay where it's at. I mean, it's, to me, when I look at these three options, clearly the most, to me, the most common sense one is to, you know, put a new shelter house in because we see how many people we turn away on a weekend basis. I mean, most of our residents would be able to take advantage of the shelter house. Uh, and again, it's revenue stream, you know? Um, we have an opportunity to get something for, I don't wanna say free anymore because we have a design work left to do. But for a verifiable cost to get years upon years of returnable income. To me, that should be an L and K offering, makes the most total sense. Now, you know, a week ago, when we're looking at the numbers on this and we thought the double building was gonna be a lot less, then yeah, let's spread the love around. Let's, let's definitely get a shelter house and, you know. Put some money in the skate park. There's a little point in time where I thought, hey, let's just do a skate park because that's really what the kids want. But then you kind of, you, you gotta start looking at the information that comes to you. You have to dissect things, um, from a, you know, a common sense standpoint. That's gonna, what's the best thing for the buck for the community as a whole? And I just feel as though with some of the big projects we've been doing lately, it goes to, you know, places where not a lot of the community members get into it. So that's when I just keep on going back to shelter house. I mean, we turn people, every weekend, we turn people away. Sorry, we don't have everyone to get down to Belfort County. And that's kicking, 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 kicking in my head. I'm, this, the public, it's a public facility, it's a public government, but it is still to be run like a business. Um, and, you know, I just have a hard time putting money into that pool. We've put a lot of money into that pool for the past two years. It still has yet broken profit. So why is this going to change anything about it? It may make the pool look nicer, okay, but you've still got aging, aging infrastructure. Your pumps are still, your pump house is still. You know, a new liner is just gonna keep the water in. You know, you've still got aging infrastructure in there that you need to thaw. So from an administrator standpoint and a key policy advisor for the city, you for a lot of city council, and I've said it multiple times, council needs to sit down and really have a heart to heart look at that pool. And whether you go ahead and put the thing in and see how that goes for a couple of years, or you guys close it in a couple of years and start saving money and put it in front of your voters, who essentially would be putting a bill anyway. The pool is just a, it's just, it's not, it's not performing how we want. And it's great that we have it, it's awesome that kids get to go to it, but at some point in time, we gotta look at, is it really beneficial for the city?
I've said this numerous, actually, go ahead, Mr. Redd.
No, go ahead, Mr. Larry.
I've said this before, I don't know if I've said it in a meeting, but, you know, anytime we have a big project, whether it's police, water towers, uh, water plants, sewage plants. The administration side brings, you know, you got, you guys work with this stuff every day. And you see that the water tower needs to come down because it's not needed, justifiable that it's not, you know, we don't need to keep the tower, for example, because, you know, we got the big one. But, you know, when we, when we did the other one, you know, you guys bring these ideas, you bring, you know, options to us for these big expensive projects. But not one time has ever, anything ever been brought to city council for the pool. That, you know, what are some options to help make it, make money? What are some options to help it from costing so much money? The pool, you know, like I said, Kroger Aquatic Center was losing, I think, you know, last month, Jack, a little over a hundred thousand dollars. Now, of course, obviously Hoover Heights can probably afford to, to lose that kind of money. You know, the pool was losing, you know, ten year, you know, six years ago, it was losing forty-five thousand dollars. If I remember the numbers right, I'm just going off the top of my memory. And then, you know, it started to bounce back a little. We put a little money into it, you know, chairs, paint, things like that. And at one point, if I do remember, I'm not, I'm not saying it ever made tons of money back, but it was to a point of breaking even. Now, I think it's back to losing because we put, you know, we put bathrooms in it, which is, you know, you know, great. And it's, and it's drawing attention that, that it's a clean pool and it's been getting updated. But I don't understand why from your guys' side, there's never been brought forward positive about the pool. It's always negative. And I understand from your point of view that yes, it's, it's, it's an enterprise fund, it should make money, but unfortunately pools, I don't think any of them make money, not because they're necessarily ran wrong. It's, you know, kind of like a drive. I mean, the drive-in's open for three, four months out of year, and that's why there are probably not too many of them around. But I also think, you know, this is a service. It's a service to the community, just like any of our parks. Now, I know our parks aren't enterprise funds, you know. Uh, Smith Park doesn't have to turn a profit. It sits there, we pump money into it for, for, you know, a second shelter house, new roads, uh, things of that nature, signage, playground equipment, whatever it may be. And that's, and that's fine, but to put money into a pool is bad. You know, you guys have been down there just as many times as I have. And to say or to even question is the community getting anything out of this facility is just, it's a, I think it's an irresponsible question.
We provide streets for our residents to drive. They don't make money. We provide police protection. That doesn't make money. We provide fire protection. That doesn't make money. We provide parks. They don't make money. Those are all services that we provide to the citizens of our communities. The pool would be exactly the same thing. Yes, it does generate some revenue to help offset the expenses, but you don't expect a swimming pool to be a profitable venture. If it were a profitable venture to, the previous owner that still had it.
Okay, so I just took some notes.
Let me, let me jump in, Mr. Bridge.
Okay.
If you don't mind. Go ahead.
So one of the points you said is that the pool potentially comes close to breaking even or.
I didn't say currently, but at times.
One thing we all have to not instill the correct answers to this is even when the year that does come close, it's not making money because of general fund transfers money to it, it's not, if not.
Not, not every year.
But.
Recently, yes, yes, but.
Every year it gets transferred. And that is actually, we can look at the budget history. And if it's not, it may be missed one year, I, in my six years as city manager.
But what I'm, but what I'm saying.
Twenty ten was eleven years.
But what I'm saying, it made an improvement.
From the general fund, you have to take that transfer out.
Oh, I agree.
And that's the bottom line. So when you do that, the pool always makes money positive in a year because of forty or sixty thousand that's given to it by the general fund. You Hoover Heights Aquatic Center, and it's almost like compare apples and apples, you know. Hoover Heights, I don't know how much it makes or loses a year, but we tend to forget that the name of it is Kroger Aquatic Center. So they have a massive corporate sponsor assisting them with the facility. Now, Councilman Graham, you had stated that streets don't make money. They do. Um, because that's how people get to our establishments, get to the house, get to the businesses. I know it's kind of far fetched that streets do, in a way, make us money.
Very far fetched, yeah.
Um, police and fire, that is a service. And you are correct about that. Um, that is a service that is, everyone in the city would actually be able to pick them up. The pool's not a service. That is, I wouldn't consider that a service in municipal government operations. Um, that's more of a, I guess, facility, not a service. Um, but when you look at, you know, when you compare the police and the fire and the streets to the pool, it's, to me, it's, I don't know. It's not comparable. But, and the reason why, we're not negative about the pool. We just see the calls we get on the pool. We see the, you know, why, why does the council keep on putting money in the pool and I don't use the pool? Um, but we also feel the phone calls on it. But we're also the ones, the professionals working this every single day with many years of experience. So if we're not suggesting to you guys any of the pool, probably because we see it's not gonna be beneficial. Having a nice entryway is not gonna bring people into the pool. It's just not. If we saw all these changes we're gonna make, we made last year, new bathrooms, it's always great to look nice. But I don't think people are coming to our pool just because we, we can get it. I think people come to our pool because it's not as big as Kroger, it's not as big as Pitt, um, and whatever else means they have. Maybe there's down there in Belfort County, they wanna come up, or you're out there on Lawson Drive. But when you see the disconnect from administration into that pool, it's just because we see the interwork, interwork of it. Again, we are, we are the professionals who work on this every single day. Um, I got a lot of schooling behind me due to this, I always got twenty plus years of experience. So if the pool to this day hasn't worked, nothing, no magic wand's going to appear, nothing's going to make it work. I think the responsibility of council is to look at that and make tough decisions. And say, all right, yeah, we do love the service, and I'm right there with you, it is a service, I get it. But we have to look at what's best for the city as a whole. You know, the city is still in recovery mode. When I took over city manager six years ago, we're still trying to save money, save money, save money. You know, I know there's been talk about, you know, what is the future of the pool? That's not for us to decide. That is for council to decide. But I would just hope that council would look at things from a, from a budgetary standpoint and see what you guys, what is, what, how much are you willing to use to provide this service? But I don't think any massive amounts of money should be going into this pool until council decides what we're gonna do. And I definitely don't think any massive, especially with a permanent building like this, even be considered for the pool until we know for sure if we go through this liner or not. And if that liner's going to work for the next fifteen years. Say we get the liner and it don't work, and now we're back to square one. The pool is just not in good enough shape to put a permanent structure down there that's going to outlive the pool itself.
And this isn't really just to like hop on and keep going. Um, a lot of people forget that the water department takes a huge hit in the pool. Not so much labor, not so much, um, I mean, there is a lot of labor, water. We send a lot of treated water via people who pay their, through their, um, where we're losing it. We're not getting any revenue off that water loss. You speak of options. Options, uh, that I bring are for requirements for the city. Water, sewer, things we are regulated to maintain no matter what. Streets, they're required to do, as he said, move around, and the first person that complains is on streets. That's your first complaint ever, on anything that the city has is at, is streets. So when you look at options of me epoxying the cracks back in two thousand nine, having Hensley's come in and drill a new drain in it, those options have always been there. But typical with options, you're gonna have funding sources. There is not funding sources on, so wastewater, I need a hundred sixty thousand dollar clarifier. I have funding sources, whether it's via rates or whatever, that can handle that because it's a requirement. I don't fix it. The EPA will be in. The little things that happen with the pool, we have tried to fix, but with the age, the liner, the things like that, those, sometimes the liner may not be brought by me, but it's because it's, it's usually not an option. The gentleman has my videos from him this year, and he almost says we almost have to pump it out. So it's kind of like, I can't bring something that is not concrete. I will not bring you, uh, something that's just floating out there that has no concrete evidence to it. It's just not, this is, it will mislead if I bring anything that is not vital to the city.
Well, not necessarily options to fix, like, you know, a crack or pain or whatever it may be, but options to generate. Like, for example, I mean, I'm not saying it's the perfect option, uh, was, you know, the, the secondary shelter house moving down there, it could generate revenue. What about other things that could generate revenue down there? What about going after, say, Kroger to make it sponsored by, you know, I don't know how that worked before, things of that nature, but is, is that an option? Is there an option to add other things down there, uh, to grants? Uh, I, you know, I, I don't know what, I know I emailed you guys a grant that I found, actually emailed it to all the council about a grant. I, I don't know what kind of money it would bring in, somewhere in a couple hundred thousand dollar range. You know, that obviously is gonna rebuild an entire pool, but if, 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 I'm not saying it is, if the liner was an option, that could possibly be paid for. I, I just feel that there's no effort to at least even attempt to not necessarily fix it, but to come up with options to at least give to us. You're right, you guys are the professional, Mr. Kiko, you're the professional, you work the pool, uh, you know, daily probably. I, you guys have the contact, you know the laws, the government as far as grants and monies that are out there. I, I just think it's always been quicker to say no. You guys asked me, does the city truly get anything out of it? I think it's the most, you know, what, what do we say the pool's probably losing? Just ballpark, you have an idea? I know Cap calling his name. But, but, but just, let's just say for conversation's sake, it's losing, we'll say twenty thousand dollars. Or we would say twenty-five. So what do you get for your twenty-five thousand dollar loss? Yes, it's a loss, and I agree, it's totally different from streets or parks that are not enterprise funds, but what do you get for that?
Plus the water, please, I'm sorry. Please add the, the, the water loss.
Right, right.
One of the things we can't, I mean, it's some of the things we would, might have to look at. I mean, if we had to charge the pool for the water they use, pool would not waste a lot.
I know, but the city doesn't charge itself for its own water.
But if they're called inter, inter, inter department, inter department will charges and they're a very real thing.
Okay, but it's always been brought to our attention that we don't charge ourselves our own water, so let's not change the story that we're trying to sell.
I'm not. What I'm trying to do is, you clearly have missed the point.
No, I understand what you're saying, that water, chemicals.
You, and water department, it spends a lot of money to treat that water that goes into the, to the pool.
I, I get.
The water department provides all the labor to open that pool. And they do not get charged for that.
I understand that.
So there's a lot that goes into opening that pool that takes away from the other departments that need to go on. But our water treatment facility plan, processes, entries, all that one, that is wear and tear of the equipment, that is chemical cost, that is manual labor cost to make sure that there's equipment pieces that are working right. That is the end result, they go back into the pool and refill that pool every time it loses. So I'm not changing the story to manipulate it. Those are the, some of the things that, right now, it's up to us. The state could in three years say, hey, it's now a mandate, you have to do it in the department, and it charges. So those are some of the things that we have experienced with that, we're not changing it.
No.
It's never come up before.
No, and I understand, I mean, we've, we've all talked about, but I know.
There's a lot that goes into that pool, other than just the pool.
And we report that water loss. Just so you know, we report it to the EPA and their.
I know, we've talked about that the chemicals that are getting used to, to, to clean that water, to send it to the pool.
And we're not talking evaporation and splash.
No, no, I, yeah, 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 no, I know. But I'm just saying for, for what you, you know, obviously, you know, we're not a, a bigger city like Hoover, but what I'm saying, what you get for, and again, I'm just using a rough number because I don't have it from here. Let's say it's losing twenty-five thousand dollars, we even go to thirty. What you get for thirty thousand dollars, spent thirty thousand dollars? And yes, it's an enterprise fund and it should cover itself, it should. Doesn't mean it has to, and I'm not saying that that's responsible, but not let it. But what you get it in comparison to a park, if you pump money into it nonstop, you get nothing. You get probably twenty kids that are making paychecks, saving money for college or cars, they're learning about finances, they're paying taxes to a city, they're learning job responsibility, you have. You have thousands upon, thousands upon, thousands of kids who come to the pool, have fun, exercise, learn how to swim. I mean, the, the benefits to that, and again, I don't know what the total is, I'm just picking out a number, but for that price tag, it, it outweighs it. Because we, we, we put money into all these other parks, we don't get anything back out of it, other than the people that use it, that's, you know, we do get that.
If you go by the pool in any warm summer, then you see it. It obviously is a popular service already.
I'm not saying that at all, but I'm making a note here because I think this conversation has switched to, should the pool stay open at all?
Yeah.
Versus should be putting this grant money into it. So my, I just don't want to put any grant money into the pool. To keep it open or not is a completely different meeting and a completely different discussion.
Right.
I just don't think we should put any of this grant money into the pool. That's it. Then that's why we're here. We're not here to talk about the pool's going to stay open or not, and we, but we can't just sit there and say it loses thirty thousand a year. Because we can start calculating how much the water department needs. Because then you have to take that into consideration too, even though it's a substantial cost. But we can't just say it loses thirty a year, we have to take into account the wear and tear of the water department and city's law. But again, I don't want to, this is not a discussion that the pool should stay open or not. This is just a discussion that should any of this grant money be used for that, if that's all. But I think we're starting to slide to a different.
I thought he said it couldn't be used for the pool.
It can't be used for the structure of like the parts that hold the water. It could technically be used for a shelter, to add shade, or chairs, or whatever it may be, just not the way I think.
Yeah, we couldn't replace the concrete in the bottom with the money, but we could build another pool, you know, I would think, or another facility, or log cabin.
Four hundred thousand.
Yeah, not before, but, yeah.
Oh, um, Dan, you guys okay? Go ahead.
Um, I have two, two statements. The first one, um, Mr. Graham, honestly, what do you think would happen to citizens given a town if we get away with services that have streets and bridges and fire? I wouldn't imagine it, I'd be, I can't win it. So do you think that's an argument to justify the fees? Apple no.
Yeah.
Isn't that something that our taxes help pay for? Do you want to come back? My second thing is relative to the shelter house. So last year, the board COVID swash, our Easter egg hunt, we were incredibly boxed into a corner. We had three hours available at the existing shelter house to set up, conduct, and completely take down and clean up the Easter egg, Easter egg hunt event. And at the time, with the three of us that were on park, that was going to be unbelievably difficult. And it limited the availability, like, it did come out and you won't be for an hour, I mean, you know, you gotta get out of here, because we have to clean this up. Because somebody's coming in to rent the shelter house, and we let it go. And the wheels of the park board are turning. And it, from my standpoint, and the risk that, you know, that I want to do a contest on the park that was recreated. It'd be incredibly hopeful to have an extra facility to be on this thing.
Mike.
Sure.
You know, when we all were elected.
Is Dan telling that, just real quick?
Yes.
Okay, I just didn't know if it was emergency or something.
When we all were elected, we took an oath to do the best job, I guess, that we can. I think one of the parts of that oath was the fact that we're going to look for, for people's money to see how it is well spent. Because you know I'm chief in proofing.
All right.
And I think, yes, we've got two different opinions of how we need to spend the money. Today, we need to figure out what we're going to do with this grant, which is a gimme. I think we need to go back, let's get on that, get that rid, and I think we need to go back to the fact that we need to have a council retreat. Design ourselves as to which way we're going to travel, what programs we're going to do in the next three, five years. Get that worked out. If we're going to put the pool up for a vote of the citizens, let's get that figured out in a separate meeting. But today, let's get this solved as to what we're going to do with this grant, get it out for a moment.
Randy, just real quick, what was, what'd you say the shelter house brought in a year?
About sixteen thousand.
And, and architect fees, I think, from Friday was going to be about, what, sixteen, eighteen thousand, is what?
It's about ten to, ten to twelve percent of the total construction cost usually. So.
So a year, year and a half, and, and the new shelter house would cover the, the cost that we're looking at of our pocket? And after that would be all revenue.
Then, you know, I said, should I just say plus or minus eight hundred, or did I have a total? Yeah, for the shelter house, bring us the statistics.
About sixty, forty.
Sixty, forty, but at the end of that, then I could say it's consistently about the same, plus or eight hundred. Did I give a dollar amount, or did I say plus or eight hundred?
I think, I think you gave a dollar amount, I apologize.
So let me close my eyes, so I can see this, I can see it. There was one year we went down a lot. I want to say it's like, how far?
Twenty? No, you just said plus or eight, eight hundred dollars, you didn't actually give a number for it. So you gave a breakdown of citizens versus non-citizens.
I'm sorry, sixteen, 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 one year was thirteen, then it went back up to sixteen.
So we'll just, yeah, say sixteen. So, you know, a year max two, and it'll cover its, its architectural fees that we would possibly have to cover.
Because it'll make a little more, it'll be a more expensive unit.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, yeah, we can definitely charge more because it'll have a kitchenette and maybe even better air and anything else.
So we do have to calculate the alprostics for return on investment. And I just calculate additional year on that.
Yep, no, I agree. So I guess, I guess the big decision is, where are we going to put it? What makes the most sense, if we're going with shelter house? Um, I know some people have brought up the old Madison Street location. I personally think that's, that's a prime location for a developer. Um, whether it's, uh, some, some single family homes or a new apartment complex. Uh, as Hoover Heights continue to get more congested, no one wants to live in Fairborn. Uh, New Carlisle is, is, is prime, I think, in the next eight to ten years, just to really see some, some growth. Um, just look at Twin Creeks. Two, I love the pool, I do. I, I grew up at the pool. Um, spent every day from the time I was probably ten to, I mean, I worked there for three years. Um, so I love the pool, I do not ever want to see it go anywhere. Um, I'm all about putting money into the pool. Um, I just don't know if right now is the right time to, to sink a ton of money into it. Um, I think the first thing we need to do is, is for the pool area, is look at the skate park. Relocating it, that will in turn help the parking issues because we can use that space for more additional parking. Um, that's got to be the first thing, whether we locate that skate park to Smith Park and take away some of the tennis courts that do not get utilized. Or, or move it to one of the other parks that have enough green space to, to, to get it over there. I'm all about putting money in the pool. Um, I, I'd like to see the study with the new bladder that, that is coming out, how many years they're going to give us on a warranty for that. I don't mind the pool loses a little money because I believe it's, it's, it's a kind of a joint adventure. You know, yes, you want it to be close to profitable, but you can swallow a little bit of loss because it does provide a valuable service to our, our residents, to our kids. I don't go there as much as I, I would like to, um, right now, because I'm just so busy with, with baseball and some other stuff. But, um, when I'm there, it's busy, and I know there's certain things that it needs. Um, I think a self, a second, open air of shelter would be nice for parties. New chairs, it needs a lot more chairs, I mean, there's fights there on weekends because they're out of chairs. Uh, that's why I bring my own down. But I think with this opportunity, with the four hundred thousand, um, this scenario, one, a link to a shelter house, like, there, I think, if you, when you look at it. Um, will, um, hopefully resolve some of your concerns about the nuance and the, uh, the exterior look of a shelter house. Um, some of the new steel buildings are, are fantastic. I mean, they can look just like a log house without being a log house, with, with minimal upkeep. Um, you know, longevity of twenty-five to fifty years before we even have to put any money into it. So like Mr. Cook said earlier, I think we need to steer this back to, to whether we do the, the two hundred fifty, two hundred seventy-five thousand for a skate park. And if we do in the same location, we're going to have the same problem going forward with the pool. We're going to have parking issues. April brought up earlier that, uh, she had made several announcements this weekend because U-Haul was going to tow a bunch of the, uh, you know, the visitors at the pool for parking. So parking is going to continue to be an issue, and, and I don't think tearing down a bunch of trees and doing creekside to put more concrete is, is the answer. I think the answer would be move the skate park to a more centralized location and use that space later for parking. Both for, for, you know, citizens and for employees. So.
Thank you for your two cents, sir. Much well spent. But you, we'll just, we'll just go down the line here, so we just kind of get, if that's okay with you guys? Can I go first?
I'll play it.
Okay. All right. Uh, well, with those options, skate park and the, in the shelter house, I would rather go with the skate park because Smith Park gets a lot of attention. And I'm not saying it's bad, because Smith Parks are, you know, are, it's a beautiful park, I love it. Um, you know, whether we put, put it into the skate park or we put it into one of the other parks even, but out of those two options, I would go for the skate park. But did you say we, we could not, with that being said, we can't expand that parking lot at all with the grant money because of the skate?
You want it Smith Park?
No, no, it, um, if, if.
Yeah, you, yeah, you couldn't expand an existing parking lot. You could build an all-new for the new facility. From what I, from what I'm gathering.
I think he's talking about at the pool. At the, but not for the pool, the skate park. So if you built, you know, you got the skate park here, if you decided to expand the skate park a little, could, would that money cover for adding new parking for the skate park? If it's new parking, it should, correct?
I don't know where you're going to get the land from unless you pull over, if they're redeveloping the land, right?
I don't, I don't know, we don't, I don't know what lands are and how far it goes. I'm just asking, if the land's there, with the money covered, to add new parking for the new skate park.
So if I, so if I might make sure I'm, at the speed of the conversation. So you would rather the money go to the skate park opposed to the shelter, to a shelter house, if it came down to one or two?
If it came out of one or two, yeah, just because, uh, you know, Smith Park has got a couple new updates over the past couple of years. I might, you know, give the kids something to have, a skate park that's been around since the early nineties.
You understand that one would generate revenue and one would not?
I understand that, Randy.
Okay.
And, do we, I'm sorry, let me just.
Howie, do we project, I mean, would it be safe to say that building materials, I mean, probably like gasoline, it's going to fluctuate, I mean, but you, the, the, uh, the, uh. Industry foresee that building materials will go down, but they're going to stay high?
Oh, no, eventually they'll go down, but in, in talking with some lumber people, because I was looking at adding a deck. It could be, it could be another year plus because the need is there now. And as the price starts dropping, that need will pick up, and then they may hold it longer.
Supply and demand, you know, once, once you get corporations and they see what they can get out of something.
And actually, let's say lumber flattened, truck, not to get off topic, trucking now is raising theirs up because now they want a piece of the pie. So when someone's going to start leveling off their price, someone else kicking in, so it'll be a mad rush for some time.
Yeah, Moody's expected eighteen more, eighteen more months before we start seeing prices on things like lumber. Um, even things like toilet paper, cardboard, aluminum, uh, Moody's projected eighteen more months before you start to see it level off and come back to pre-aided and processed. Not just because of supply and demand, but the increase in wages, uh, that these companies are having to pay to get people to come back to work, or to, to work.
And federal, federal prevailing regulations.
Yeah, so, um, so, yeah. I, I, I don't, I don't predict pricing to come, come down anytime soon. I mean, we just, uh, we spoke with a builder last week to build a house that we, we, we got plans for, and that his quote two years ago, and it's forty-seven thousand more now than it was two years ago. Strictly lumber. There's no, no increase in manpower, a little bit of manpower, but most of that is all lumber.
So one year thing, Mayor, it, it was, I, I just make sure I'm understanding, um, shelter house, Smith, shelter house, well, was it an option at pool? Skate park, pool, new skate park at pool, was that your?
That's just because that was presented by.
No, I, no, I know, I'm just trying to gather all these because I'm thinking Carlisle Park, um, Will, Willowick has no room for anything.
No, no, no.
Um, Carlisle Park is not good for, I can just tell you, not good for skate parks. It's hidden.
Yeah.
An, an open gazebo creates issues.
Be noisy.
Um, so, yeah, I, I was just trying to think, make sure I'm getting parks right with where you might want to put something with what utilities are available and stuff like that.
Yep. Go ahead, sure.
I'm kind of torn, um, the skate park does need to be done. But then I got to thinking, think more people would use another shelter house than would use a skate park. I know the pool is always packed, the shelter house is rented every weekend. I have not seen a whole lot of people at once at the skate park. It's possible because of the conditions and everything. I would go more for a, a new shelter house at Smith Park. If the grant will cover, it's about all.
Would council be opposed? We have, and I have not talked to Howie about this because I'll, it's definitely taken a swing in this generation. We've talked about it very briefly here. We've talked about it once every few years. I only have to know about recent, I don't know. Uh, just casey. We have two tennis courts at each, at the park. There are one thing and there's double thing. We also have one that's a single, it's one court already fenced. And I have looked, every, not every single time I pass this court, but I do look at how many people are using these tennis courts. Not a lot of people do. We could literally take the one that just has the single tennis court in it. Take the tennis court stuff out and move the skate park stuff right there. Right off Smith Street, highly visible. It's already fenced in, I don't know if concrete would work.
I just, I'll just say, no, I apologize, I'll just say, uh, it is a nature works grant to put all that in, so nothing can be done at those tennis courts.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Is there like a?
I don't know what the, the length is on the time that you have to maintain that facility, but that nature works grant was all brand new asphalt in the single court. With the poles, the nets, that was all purchased and then, um, re-tie in some fence with a nature, OD and R nature work grant.
I wasn't here when that city got that nature work grant, so I can come back right all over here.
I, I don't know what the longevity is, if it's ten years of keeping it, but I know they hit us for Brew Baker Park, you know, the exercise equipment, that's been there for how long? I mean, obviously.
It's gone.
Yeah, we still have to maintain a sign.
Right.
But, yeah.
Good, Mr. Graham? All right, Ms. Sagles.
Um, I'm like Mr. Graham, I'm torn. I'd like to see the skate park fixed up. But as far as income to the city, I think if we were to do another shelter house at the, at Smith Park, I think. That would be. Having more money coming out.
I'm, I'm in favor of that, new shelter house. I think that. I think that the skate park needs more attention than just fixing it up. I mean, I think it needs to be dealt with so that it's more attractive and accessible and whatever.
Then we're handling it with the shelter house, not a large scale.
May I offer some, something on the, uh, skate park? The skate park equipment may look old, but it's fully functional. And if you look around, because I've been Calif, I've been a lot of California where it's huge for skate parks. Uh, they don't, I mean, they got poles that look grungier than that. It is grungy, I agree. Um, it's hard to re-powder coat the surface on those, but it, it does need cleaned up. But it is still fully functional, it is not like broken down, because most, most of your new skate parks are going to be concrete with a, um, metal ridge on all the lips. Where they very rarely make metal anymore, but sometimes hold up longer than concrete, sometimes. So you may look at it, it, what I think it needs is a few more apparatuses, but by looking at the half pipe, it still works fine. You, there's nothing, there's no like unsafe hazards with rail or the ranch or anything like that, um, because. Um, because we do replace bolts on it, but it does look grungy.
There are some stuff, a couple items that maybe you can shoot your unit or something.
Yeah, do that because, I mean, these guys look at it every day and if they're missing like a, say a lip came up when you get a new entry ramp or something, but.
All right, so Mr. Bridge, you need a, do you like a motion for this, sir?
Oh, yeah, we need some direction to get the ball rolling.
What, give them some, give them any some details, sir.
Okay, so move, we continue with the grant for the shelter house.
We want to, we do, we use the skate park.
That's Smith Park.
Hold on, I'm sorry. And I am the clerk, so let me get myself back in that headspace right there. I'm sorry, was there a motion made?
Yes.
There was, and who made, who closed the motion?
Right, that's what I was thinking.
Make a motion for us to go ahead with the grant for the shelter house at Smith Park.
I second.
Ms. Agleson wants to second.
And the shelter house to the center.
Yeah.
All right, so we got a motion on the floor and we will start with Mayor Lowery.
No.
Councilman Graham?
Yes.
Councilwoman Agleson?
Yes.
Councilman Roadwall?
Yes.
No, no, that's how it goes. Robert rules order. You always stick it back to the first and second one last. Appreciate you.
Much better, Howard.
Councilwoman Noakowski?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Uh, that motion passes five to one.
Now, do you want a motion to refuse Mr. Cobb?
Well, we have to go into.
Citizen of the Year?
Yeah. Excuse me, so the next, are you good, Mr. Bridge?
I am, yes.
Okay, so we'll drop down to Citizen of the Year award discussion and I will, I guess, if you don't mind, Ms. Agleson, M F U, because it's kind of a thing of the market. Or, but Mr., I can't remember whose idea it was. Okay, well, I want you to start her off because this is your kind of topic. If you don't mind.
There were three ladies that were, and their names were mailed to us and, uh, to maybe honor them as Citizens of the Year for what they have done for the city through the pandemic and everything else. And I just think that, uh, I know that we would like to do a Citizens of the Year, Citizen of the Year on a annual basis, but I think these three, like, need to be recognized and then we can do another one to announce. Are you, uh, I guess I was intending to recognize these three now and then the possibility of recognizing another person toward the, uh, town hall meeting? Clarify.
So are, are you guys thinking not necessarily in the forums or proclamation, but like maybe, because I meant to say you can probably pick up a, some sort of plaque. Fairly cheap amount of price. Are you thinking of like a plaque, forum type recognition or?
That's easy.
Yeah. Just, I mean, even, it's just something printed and framed.
Instead of Citizens of the Year coming to you a community service award?
There you go.
Yeah. Um, you know, because they've gone above and beyond. Uh, what, what a regular member of the community has to be. To be outstanding and then, uh, maybe going forward, um, even for this year, get more of a, a Citizen of the Year award. Actually get a little bit more detail in what we want to put into this and how we want to take votes if we want to do, uh, a nomination on, on, online on the website, but.
Yeah, I think we can think about that.
I mean, that, that makes sense because one of those people was Tilly Foltz and she does not live in the city, so she's not sitting.
Is that what, do you remember that, Mr. Bridge? Did you say that was something we could set up on the website where they could like, you know, like submit a nomination?
I don't think, did we say set up a website?
Not a website, just a new tab to ours.
We're going to put a form on the website.
Oh, yeah, that, that is easy, yeah.
For the Citizen of the Year and also another form for the veterans.
For the flag.
For the banners.
Yeah, but we're not getting to that until twenty-eight, veterans.
Right.
Yeah.
We need to get into that next, uh.
Yeah, and we can't go off topic too much, but I'm going to work on a policy to that. I'll, I'll meet you, I, I'll write it down very now. It's, well, I'll, you know, change it up too much. Um, yeah, I mean, adding a tab or adding stuff like that is very super simple. I also offered counsel too, because I think we first talked about this like a month ago, a month and a half. But if you guys want to do even something more simple, you guys can take names and I can keep in a cell sheet and then share that with you like I do the ordinances. How you guys want to do it, so I know what I can do to help.
So do you want to give?
Yeah, I'm thinking it's idea of.
Is it a community service award?
Community service.
You want to direct Mr. Bridge to start up a plaque for the person, those three ladies? I'm assuming you would each give each a plaque.
Right.
Is this something we're going to do past this top one sign two? Okay, because I'm going to buy more than three because I'll get a discounted from what I got. Community service award, okay, what would you like to, what would that say on the plaque?
Do you want to research some or do you already know?
What do you think? I'm thinking basically this is an appreciation award given to so-and-so.
Blank.
For.
Given this day of blah. Well, we, I don't, we want, here's my recommend. Because what I'll do is I'll do it like we have our keys of the city. And we, I got a box of those around it, you know, we send them to Kersey Smith. So I can go down Dayton Stencil and get some of these made. Um, community service award, um, just something that, wherever it is, we can send like a little piece of metal out and get that engraved with that name and just fix it to the already, uh, plaque. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So with that being said, it might be hard to do, given this day, blah, blah, blah.
Right. Right.
You see what I'm saying? What we could do is do like name and then a year under it.
Yeah.
Twenty, twenty-one.
Right, yeah.
Is that good? Okay.
Like a motion for that, sir?
Yeah. I gotta write it down, man, hold on. I don't need a motion for it.
A motion, retract your motion?
So basically, community service award, insertable, metal tag, name. You'd be year, date, month, just year, anything.
Year.
So year.
Name and year. Easy, gotcha. And what do you want the plaque to say other than, it could be community service award at the top like a heading and, and what'd you say, in recognition?
In recognition of your contribution to the community of New Coralale, Ohio. Okay.
In recognition to your contributions.
To the, uh, community of New Coralale, Ohio. I guess we got to put an eye on her because there is a New Coralale Indiana.
In recognition to your contribution to the community of New Coralale. Should we, would we like a oak wood? Do we want, type of wood or does that not matter?
So it looks nicely for a toy.
It'll look nice. Okay, got it. I'll get those ordered. Uh, I don't know what Dayton Stencil's turnaround time is right now. I haven't ordered anything from them since I got Mr. Roadwall's name tag and I was a minute ago. Um, but I'll call them tomorrow and then I'll let you know. But we're having this anticipated date of, you know, a little bit. Are we doing those three ladies that you mentioned?
Yes.
I'll get ahold of you later with the. Oh, I do, you're right. I think so.
Hi. Um, Randy sent me a, a grant that he was notified of by USDA.
We can't do that, Miss Agleson. We can, we only can stick to the A and B, the active respect.
Next meeting.
Regular meeting.
It's only week.
No, we're going to lunch tomorrow. We're, we're going to sit down and talk about tomorrow, right? Yeah.
We need a motion to excuse Mr. Cobb, which I'll make.
Motion by Ms. Agleson. Second by Mr. Council.
All right, so. Councilwoman Noakowski.
Yes.
Councilman, uh, Roadwall?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cook?
Yes.
Mayor Lowery?
Yes.
Councilman Graham?
Yes.
And then we'll go back to, uh, Councilwoman Agleson?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Noakowski.
Yes.
All right. Motion to excuse Mr. Cobb of Mass by six to zero.
And April put together a request for the, 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 or something.
Uh, we need a motion to adjourn.
We do adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Graham, second by Ms. Agleson. Sorry.
Councilwoman Noakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Roadwall?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cook?
Yes.
Mayor Lowery?
Yes.
Uh, we'll go to Councilwoman Agleson?
Yeah.
And, all right, we are adjourned at four twenty-three.